I would like at this time to call this meeting if we are moving up the board at Anderson County to order. At this time, we would ask James King to come forward and we just can't reach student reference class.
The United States of America and the Republic of which stands for one nation, another God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Thank you, guys. Board members, you have been given the agenda that at this time do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting? Mr. Eaves, second, Dr. Barnes, if you're in favor, please raise your hand. All are in favor, so we will adopt the agenda at this time. You have also had time to read the minutes from the January thirteenth meeting. Do I have, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes at this time? Ms. Corley, second, Dr. Barnes, if you're in favor of approving the minutes of the January meeting, raise your hand. Passes Ms. McNamal. We will leave at this time to recognitions and alter as to Dr. Lawrence's order.
Yes, we have two groups and James Brent, if you would come up here and I want to introduce you and a little bit about why you're here. James and Brent are two of our three Michelin scholars and this is a big deal. Michelin is one of our companies, local companies, Anderson County that has same fit that we have an internship program. And they put out four scholarship programs for students, for students to go out Anderson County. Each of each got three to four scholarships. These guys are currently, they're seniors, but they're also, as soon as they can get out of class each day head over to Michelin and the, I guess the Iowa campus, that Brent. And they put in work, how many hours a week together? And when they finish the school year, when they graduate, if they're done what they're supposed to do at Michelin, Michelin turned around and offered them a job. And then Michelin will also offer them opportunity to take to the college if you want to. That's pretty impressive, really proud of you guys. I was gonna put Brayden on the spot, but do you have any questions about this experience at Michelin?
They have a report to do for parts of the plants. We only stay one part of the plant for about four weeks until we get certified in. And then once we get certified, they do this for the other one. Driving off their five, G and D P and D P is basically just shipping and rubbing. So then once I get hired a full time, my skill is time, get into that, then drop it off at the job. So they carry over.
And then of course, that's pretty impressive, thank you both for being here. The next group we want to recognize is our junior scholars and we have four of about ten total students. But junior scholars is the purpose of that program is to identify students with exceptionally high scholastic achievement and intellectual ability and to provide opportunities for these students that will facilitate their intellectual growth, broaden their individual interest and promote their scholastic achievement. The students we recognize by achieving status of being a junior scholar by scoring five hundred fifty or higher on the evidence-based reading and writing portion of the PSAT or scoring five hundred thirty or higher on the math portion of the PSAT. I'm not sure which one, each one fifth, they may have done both, but really proud of these guys and these people we have recognized. If you guys want to come on up here, Dwight and I also, Ally McGath, Letty Smith-Reed and Seth Taylor, come on up here. And well done. At this time, you're welcome, all of you stay, or you're also welcome to take off. Parents, thank you for coming out here to support them. You're also welcome to say that you may want to take off with your, thanks again for being out here, all of you.
Hi. There's no public participation tonight, so we'll leave on two. I have number seven on the agenda, which is, um, which is, I'm offering that over to, um, first order, um, Ms. Corley.
Um, our first patient, I know he's through the month of January, um, our, I have a little on my, we look at that and, um, fourteen percent above what we received this time last year, but, um, the pressure is going to be back if we come in early, so, um, we are hoping, expecting that to kind of follow on to this one, so. Um, page three shows our expenses through the month of January and they are right in line with where we were this time last year compared to budget. But, um, I think everything looks good as far as expenses. Page fourteen shows our passion out through the month of January. We had, um, ten point eight million dollars in the bank in our revenue bank account under the end of January. Um, if you look at page seventeen, it shows the graph with FY twenty compared to FY eighteen and nineteen. Um, you can see a pretty big spike there, um. A lot of that has to do with the extra million dollars that patients around, the early million dollars that we've gotten with that. And, um, we have seven hundred thousand more in plus now, like this year than last year. And also, um, this time last year, a sales tax owed our operating four hundred and forty-one thousand. This year we have a surplus of six hundred and thirty-five thousand in sales tax, which is about a million dollars extra we only had this time last year.
Now, Ms. Arnold, when we spoke, I got pretty excited, that's a nice cash flow to have in there. But that is largely attributed to our sales tax, so what should we expect from that line in the next few months?
That's probably gonna start with, like, we start the renovations at Marshall and Lunt Castle. So we, we didn't say that through the month of March, that we would have the cash on hand when we started the doctors, so we wouldn't have to give it to the operators to, um, front of that.
But it should still stay above our fiscal year, eight to nine?
Yes. Um, the next page makes eighteen show the first order through the month of January, not a whole lot going on. Um, we added some access points for, um, several different stores, but that was based with E-Red line. Um, ordered some new A D equipment for the office order of the H P. Um, page twenty-six shows our people at T for the month of December. Um, we gained like a four hundred and eight, two thousand, we ended the month with four hundred and eight, five thousand, total for all the schools. Not a whole lot of, um, used normal access. Page twenty-seven shows our energy analysis for the month. Um, it's coming down, it's right around the last few months and lower than the last, it's been a bad month we've had several years, so. Um, page twenty-nine shows our sales tax collections through the end of January, which is really for the month of July or November. And, um, as of the end of January, we have received a million dollars in the first five months of our fiscal year. Our average collection at this time last year was a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars from our average collection. So money's here, over two hundred thousand dollars, so. Um, there's too many steps going away there, we're hoping this will be about two point one million dollars in sales tax this year. And then the next two pages are the projects that are, um, on the list for this year. So far we've spent seven hundred and fourteen thousand dollars in our total collection during the drive up a million dollars. And, um, with our fund balance, there's four hundred and forty-nine thousand that we've created from last year. We have about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
If I was wondering, I'm seeing a lot of pain with such a bridge tip and I'm seeing a lot of technology things for me. What is a bridge tip, guys?
Those are, I think those are the active to, um, can I, I'm sorry, how, deep technology. Very well, but I think that, um, to help, you know, the wireless internet, so you'll have more, um, more capacity and more machines can connect. So definitely not easy for this, for this time.
I just want to highlight this one, they'll provide us with invoices for the labor fees that we're discussing. Uh, and I will say, one thing you jumped out at, you were, that four members have contacted the attorneys. I told them we all have text, uh, good seventy times, that cost them, it's over four thousand dollars. Uh, I have that, the fact that labor fees are going up, each one won't get out. I would, uh, request that we discuss, uh, labor fees next time this week. Uh, we need to look at ways we can save on, like, having to raise some of our expenses.
And the last part on consent attempt is no trip request, we have quite a few that are just done there. And I'll just go do a pretty quick, uh, the person's voice soccer, that he went to World Beach, and it's for, uh, period of three, three nines, okay, eighteen, uh, tournament. Marshall, uh, actually Marshall and Belton, uh, elementary, under Merritt Academy, is going to the Georgia Aquarium, Marshall twenty, and they're taking about ninety-five, uh, total. And then Honey Path Middle, will be going to the Biltmore House, a marquee for it, taking thirty-five. And Honey Path Elementary, Merritt Academy, for the Stone Mountain, taking sixty-five students, and they're all doing it the same day, that's the time. They have that schedule these, because they have to coordinate with their Twenty First Century Grand. Uh, we also have Honey Path Elementary Fourth Grade, which is going to Georgia Aquarium, taking the second, taking a hundred and nine students. And then, uh, you should have two, they're running your U S and I, one of them from V H P that have placed one in Greenfield, Georgia, a marquee set, and they're taking five students for livestock protection. And then there'll also be going to Myrtle Beach, uh, for three nines, taking sixty before F M eight town. And that's, uh, hopefully, eight, no trips, either out of state or over nine, two parts of the fourth people as well.
Okay, um, so do I hear a motion to approve the items that are listed on the consent agenda? Join your second?
Second.
Um, all three, raise your hand. And always very good. At this time, we'll leave to, um, number eight, I'll catch up, which is on to the next report.
Yes, um, as Ms. Borse has said before, and if you're up first, on this, our business department, uh, and Ms. Hanks, obviously, in our business departments, uh, they have been focused on many years, our I B A program. We are, rightly so, having a lot of, uh, pushback from our state department that we really push in computer science program. And we're often in computer science class, I believe we have it at least the last two years.
Yes, this is our second year with our computer science.
Second year, but that's all extended a class and we felt like that if we're going to enhance our students and our programs, we need to step up and do more than just a class. We needed a completed program similar to what the I B A program is. So at this time, as Hanks will dump the support assistance, it will be going through some of the changes we're being looking at our business, our program at the high school.
The business program is pretty much getting a complete overhaul. I don't know how long, um, integrated business application has been in play, do you know?
Um, this is my twelfth year and it's what we've always taught, so it leased well, but definitely hardly more than that.
So integrated business applications is the course that our business program is primarily run around, um, twelve plus years. Basically, they learn the different programs within Microsoft Office and they study those and they practice them and they learn how to use them. The state is kind of pushed through some different requirements. This was a class every student had to take to graduate, but now the state is requiring them to no longer need I B A, is what we call it, but to need a computer science credit. That starts next year to graduate. The good thing about this is the state gave us a big, long list of classes that can count towards this. So it's not just one class anymore that they have to have to graduate. There's a big page, front and back of classes, um, that they could take that would count as their computer science credit. So this is more just learning how to use very, very specific program, moving into actually tell me about computers. How do you do coding, learning about computers itself and how, what a computer looks like. Um, Ms. Hanks and I were talking before we came in here and she said, because she currently teaches this class, what is a computer? Like, the kids don't, they think just a computer is what we all think of as a computer, but she said a microwave, a smoke detector, like, those are all computers. So they're looking at things like that. Uh, so these are the, we looked at that big, long list that the state said would count as computer science credit and we said, what can we actually handle teaching right now? Cause we want to start small scale, I'd like to eventually be able to offer more. But there is some certification that comes along with being able to teach these courses. So these are the four that we're gonna offer next year that the kids could use towards their graduation requirement. Only the last one, Foundations of Animation, is new to V H P. So Ms. Hanks is gonna kind of run through these for you guys.
So with the changes coming from the state department, like Ms. Borse said, it really opens up the door as to what we can offer to our students. Um, you know, you looked at the previous slide and it was game design. You know, we have city to just do practices and so we're really excited about what we can offer now. So Fundamentals of Computing, um, this used to be exploring computer science, but hasn't been changed. So this is my second year taking it and we're way ahead of her, um, as far as, um, other schools teaching this course, so I'm excited about that. Um, and like, the things that we did, like what Borse said, uh, what is a computer? Like, we, we really get into problem solving and using different subjects, uh, to do that. Right now, we're doing math, geometry, um, design, as in, uh, graphic design, all in one project. So we're bringing in a lot of different, um, areas, um, for the students, so it just opens up their eyes on, oh, why do I have to take biology? Or why do I have to take English? Or why do I have to take an eleventh year? And we're doing all of that in this one class and it's really neat to watch the light bulbs go off in our students', um, brains when they see, hey, I do have the answer. I actually have the answer, it's not objective, it's not A, it's not B, it's not C, it's not D. But, um, with them providing their evidence that they really, that they think is over, uh, different ways of solving.
And this class in particular is gonna be offered to eighth graders as well.
Yes.
Eighth and ninth graders, we're gonna have, I hope, at least one section of each at the two middle schools. Um, so that they can get kind of another, just one more high school class they can take before they get to the high school. Game design is what it sounds like and we currently offer this, but we're hoping to offer it, open up some more sections of it. They're designing, um, computer games. We have software that we're currently using and the kids in there are all, you walk in that class and every kid is glued to the, um, to the screen. They are starting from the beginning, coding and building games. I know, well, say the career center is starting a game design program next year, so we've got some competition with them. But those kids that don't, can't maybe make it fit into their schedule or don't maybe have all the things they need to get in career center, they'll still be able to take it with them. So I'm excited to offer that more on a larger scale. I think we only have like one section of it right now and we're gonna open it up to a lot more kids next year.
And we've also been teaching game design, I think this is our fourth year, um, teaching, so this is nothing for us.
Just opening up to more kids.
So web design, fundamentals of web design is exactly what it is. We are designing webpages, um, for different things. Um, the sports side were discussing this, so the first year I taught web design, I felt like I was going in blind, um, you know, I had never designed a webpage from scratch. Um, and so the textbook that I have is very difficult. But what I learned through that is that students actually learn more by having that difficult textbook. So the second year, um, I taught that, we actually, we did what's called the twenty time clock, that if you know anything about that, you spend twenty percent of your class time doing something that you're very passionate about. And the reason I used web design is that was our, our, um, extension, if you will. Uh, they had to design a webpage based on their pa, uh, website, based on their passion, on what they were passionate about. So just using different types of coding language for design purposes. And Foot, Foundations of Animation, this will be our new course, um, that we discussed earlier. Um, with this course, students and with our Um, with this course, students, and with our other, uh, design courses, students will be able to get an industry certification. So it's called the Adobe Certified Certification. And, um, what happens is, obviously, it gets a little bit of interest, um, with other students. But also, some colleges actually accept that as like a clip or a test out of an intro design course. So, um, depending on what path they are on, they are willing to do that. So if you've ever heard the word CAPE, what we're referring to is Career and Technology Education. Um, you know, we love our A P. So Career and Technology Education, um, is not just for the business department. Um, our, our A P is in there, our teaching, um, program is in there. Um, and so we're just a separate, a different part of that as well. But what we are allowed to do is, we actually get federal funding from, um, from CAPE for completing pathways and programs. And with us offering these new courses as computer science requirements, we're able to offer two, maybe three more new pathways for our students. Because it's not just taking a course and getting funding for that. It is completing an entire program with a major, um, is what we're doing to our programs. Um, we, we, our math lab was provided by CAPE. Our lawn mowers in A P are provided with CAPE. Um, our drones, our iPads, all of that is from CAPE programing, that we would not be able to get if we did not offer these pathways for our completed persons. Um, the first one, the Business, Business Information Management Pathway. Um, only difference between what we're offering now, which is general management, is on the next slide, is we're going to have to, um, offer digital publication design with this as well. Again, we have taught this course, um, just our rotation of that has changed a little bit. But we're bringing that in, we're actually, with one course, we're actually able, um, able to add an entirely major program. And so it's a three, uh, credit program, the two required courses, and then the students can choose any of these. Which is majority of them.
Yes.
And we offer all of these. And the majority of them take them.
So, just to make it all make sense, as long as they take two of these and one of these, that's funding that we get.
Yes.
To go towards, that towards our school to fund lots of the things that they're doing.
And we get funding per student.
So like, she can buy cameras to do digital, digital editing, she can buy, they buy GoPros, they, things like that. All comes from getting kids to take all of these courses.
I mean, our general management pathway, this is the only pathway that we have available right now. Um, and it's just three courses that we offer. Uh, you don't see the choice, because what's required in this pathway, um, the only courses that we offer are these three. And so, big changes with having one go up to three, that'd be four. And then Web Design and Communication. Um, again, our required courses are Web Design One and Two, which we offer. And then the students can choose one of these, Image Editing, Entrepreneurship, Foundations of Animation, um, Computer Science and Media Design. And of course, that also counts for their computer science requirements as well.
So, one of the things we have coming, which will be a whole separate presentation to you guys, I'm sure, at some point, this is a whole nother meeting, is we're in the works, we've been having lots of meetings and lots of prep to open a school store, I'm hoping, next school year. And I really wanted my business department to help rally around us, to help us make this thing successful. And they actually came to me when they heard about the school store, and said, this is how we can help you. So we offer entrepreneurship, image editing, web design, digital publishing. And they came to us and said, this is how we can help make this school to the store, school store successful. And part of the thing that I like about our school is that our kids are constantly doing things to get back to our school. We have our manufacturing program, they, if you take one foot into our school, you see something they've made. The stuff they have made is all over our building. We have our teaching pathway, we all know that that is building teachers to hopefully come back and teach in our community. And hopefully, our business program will be moving towards that same direction where they can give back to the schools. We talked about having entrepreneurship, we're going to have the school store open during lunch. So making sure that entrepreneurship, that class is offered during our lunch period, during third period, make sure they can help run the store and do inventory and all of those things that go along with the store. Um, image editing, doing promotions, doing commercials, all of that stuff. Web design, building a website that has the inventory, keeping it updated. Digital publishing, once again, doing our print media commercials to show our kids of what we have and stop what we don't, new, new items, things like that. But to have that personal investment for the kids, knowing that they're not just doing a project on make your own business, but it's actually a business that we have, that they are contributing towards their school. So, that's just my, my kind of big overall, is that I want to be able to say that the kids are giving back to our school. And business is our next big push, that's the department. Cause we've got it going in several other areas. Right now, our business department, I think, I'm sure, will be positively contributing.
Questions? How many teachers do you have in the business department?
There's three of us. Yes, ma'am, we've always had three, and, um, we are actually offering more courses with everybody.
Who, who else?
Um, Russ Isol, Kathy Smith, and myself.
The bulk of their courses were that I B A course, and now that that's going away, cause it's no longer, they have received other courses.
And thank you for the call.
Our, our kids made that. Our manufacturing kids made that.
And if you're going to have a school store, you have to bring like, I'm.
Yeah, they designed the logo on my phone, and then.
Oh, I want to, so thank you for your touch.
Some kind of laser donut. So that's dangerous.
No, that's one of the ones that we funded, who sells that.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we don't want to give too much, too much about the store, because we will have another presentation, I'm sure of when. But I will say, another piece of that is, this has been partnered with people in our community. Uh, this is not just K H P High School, this is a large community wants, wants to make this happen. Very excited, uh, just stay tuned.
Yeah.
Yes, and we're going to, we're going to make a lot of recognition with this, and we want this to be a big kickoff. Again, I'm, I'm hoping that it'll be, start the next school year. Probably not any sooner, but it's taken a little while to kind of get a movement order. The force is, we come and does some painting and stuff, and now they're making steps furniture, and what it's going to look like inside there. I'm trying not to leak too much out right now.
Very much in conversation mode right now.
But a lot of excitement, and that's just a small piece of what they're doing in our business department. Uh, Ms. Borst, I'm going to slide sit down, because I have another data I want to share with you, and she's going to jump on this when it's close to. Uh, it's called the Bear Shuffle. And it is a opportunity for our students to get some interview experience. Now, we can talk about interviewing in our English classes, we can, uh, coach them a lot of the programs. But this is going to be something we're using in our community, in our business partners as well. That's what I'm very excited about, it's the date is February the twentieth, I believe it's like nine, uh,
Nine to eleven fifteen.
You're welcome to come by and be in our media center. Tell us a little about the people, the folks that are going to be doing, and why is it called the Shuffle?
Okay, so, just to rewind to the beginning of where this all stemmed from is, one of the big things that was very, very important to me, as I took over as principal, is making sure that our kids were college and career ready. We do a lot academically, but we have a lot of kids going directly into the workforce. What are we doing for those kids? Um, so, I wanted to make sure every senior left our school with a resume. And I can tell you, all of them have successfully, all completed resumes, they all did that in the fall. Um, I would like to start that freshman year, sometimes they don't remember. So I, I want to do that building from freshman year to senior year. So the next thing I wanted, uh, oh, the next thing we did was a job application. So, we got a, Anderson County gave us this generic job application, and every senior filled out the job application with the help of all of our counselors and our C D Fs. And I walked in the rooms, and I was in a room with honors A P kids, and then right next door, I walked in to a room with our C T level kids. None of them know how to fill out a job application. It doesn't matter what level student it is, they don't know, when we say put down your references, they want to put their mom and dad down. They don't have a clip. And these are kids that, even if they're college bound, they may still be getting a job, so they need to learn these skills. And it was just amazing to me, we just take for granted, because we've done it before, we know how to do it, but they do not. So we walked them through every single step of, of an application, to make sure that they knew how to do that. So then finally, the last piece of this is the Bear Shuffle, and Tanya Loffler, who has like created a genius in our school, she's our C D F. Um, she created a name for Bear Shuffle, because she wanted it to be like, keep it shuffled, and around Valentine's Day. The kids are going to be shuffling around, it's actually going to be in our auxiliary, auxiliary gym. But what's going to happen here is we, I think, this list isn't even u- up to date as much as it could be, because she was out today, so I couldn't get the most up-to-date list. But, um, we're going to have businesses and some universities come, and they're going to be stationed. So let's say we have fifteen, they're going to be stationed around our auxiliary gym. And we're going to have twenty chairs in front of each table. And they're going to come with all of their big setups, their signs, like they would to a career fair. And they're going to tell our, our seniors about the businesses. And then they're going to rotate every fifteen minutes, because they're going to get up and go to the next business. So we, we have businesses come in all the time and talk to our kids. Our kids, and what we've realized is, our kids don't know what's out there. They're not aware of what's out there, that people don't want them. And maybe our businesses aren't aware of what our kids have to offer. Like, we had a business come, they were going away, that our kids could run a fork with, and you could come right in, work on day one, and they wouldn't have to waste a couple weeks training them. Like, they couldn't believe that.
But our students will just tell which one it was, and then write them. Where's Lynn write to them?
They had no idea.
No clue. What is Lynn write to do? And so, that's all the business, and they've got to come and be a part of it.
So they're going to tell the kids about the business, and the kids are going to shuffle to each, to each table. But before they shuffle, each business has been, or university has been assigned a different interview question that we've given them, so that none of them repeat. And they are going to ask that group that interview question. And then, we're going to let some of the kids say their answers, I know some will be more shy, and some will be more vocal. And then that business is going to tell them how they would like to hear that interview question answered. And we've gotten each kid a notebook and a pen, like a V H P notebook and pen, so that they could take notes on every single one of these interview questions. So let's say we have fifteen businesses in the universities, by the end of the event, they will have fifteen different interview questions, and how those should be answered, walking out the door. That's a skill for every single person in this plane. I'm like, I would want to be sitting in there, how they, how they would like those, uh, questions to be answered. I'm super excited about it, I hope it works, I hope it's something that we start doing early for our seniors. Um, I made sure we had our own table, I contacted Mr. McCall and said, I want an A F T P table, because there's more to work in our district than being a teacher. And a lot of our kids don't know that. We have tons of job opportunities here, so we're even going to have a table there. I'm very, very excited, so, if any of you are free on the twentieth, don't freeze, walk down to our athletic area, send you down.
Athletic area?
Yes.
Just at the media.
Yeah, no, it's the whole senior class. They can't fit in the library. Question?
I like the sound of that, because I work with college kids, they don't always know what's out there.
Right.
And I think that's great, when we're supposed to actually do those two questions we can hear. We take a lot for granted, because these kids don't have any clue about.
And I, I tell a lot of them, you never know how your life is going to change. You could think you're going to college, and then something could happen, you're sophomore here at college, and you may have to go work for a year or two. And so you need to be prepared for whatever life may have to be, so, hopefully, we're doing that. It's the entire senior class. Um, we have, our dual enrollment students take classes in the mornings, and we can't pull them from those classes. But we've made space so that they can just come right in after their classes are over, and sneak in. We've worked it out.
Mrs. Knott, uh, champion of the National School Board Association event last year. We thought it might be nice to give a little bit of feedback of what happened. I've got a handout for board members, we hope this. Uh, it was a year in the test, and it was very, very fun. One of the things that was discussed was the census, it seems that the School Board Association, by agreement of court, to oppose, um, oppose the question about citizenship, which a lot of us had a little concern about. Uh, question about citizenship had been on the census up until nineteen sixties. The problem is, the School Board Association feels that a lot of people would not want to be honest in their work or group, because they are afraid of possible deportation. Our concern, from our local perspective, is this census is how they determine who gets representation counts. And so, the total numbers reported will be very large in some states, and they won't be citizens of the United States, which is going to hurt South Carolina a great deal. So, that is one of the aspects that's going to continue to happen these years. Another matter was vouchers. The School Board Association opposes vouchers, because it pulls money from our district. When we went on the hill to speak to legislators, we knew ahead of time that representative junkies in favor of vouchers. So sometimes you choose that, we decided not to get into that with them. We focused on both, uh, the local idea, I D B A, special laws, and also the more infrastructure. Secretary of Education, Ed Zeiss, spoke at congressional luncheon. He was very much in favor of vouchers, and he was not well received. We did go over some needs for additional mental health funding, that Dr. Rosenberg had asked us to address with legislature. And they assured us it's actually going to be included in the idea, and also the infrastructure. Now, one thing that was a clear and bold focus about individuals with disabilities education act, the federal government is supposed to fund forty percent of the cost. But at no time has federal funding gone above nineteen percent. One thing we focused on with all of the legislators is, we know we can't up it twenty-one percent immediately, but we do think it's important to start working it up, because there are a number of unfunded mandates that we're on the streets. And it's not fair to say federal government is going to fund forty percent, but not do it and expect us to raise our taxes on our citizens to try to do this. E-Rate is a program that helps schools and libraries connect to broadband. They're going to have a good bit of an increase in funding for that. There's additional appropriations this year to help in education. Higher Education Act for the optimization is due, and teacher education is very focused. One thing that we're hoping will happen is, this one, teacher prep students can get four thousand dollars a year that can be forgiven if they teach over a certain number of hours. We are encouraging the legislators, and they've been very upset, to increase that to eight thousand dollars a year. The problem is, so many of the people going into teacher education end up having these converted to loans, because they don't stay in education. So the teach grants is going to be a focus. The administration did project that sixty-six percent of students receiving the teach grants will have it converted to loans. So sixty-six percent of those people who are going into teacher aid don't stick out for a while. You can see on page thirty, I have enrollment in teacher education programs from twenty-ten to twenty-seventeen. In twenty-ten, we had over seven hundred and ninety thousand students enrolled in teacher education programs. Twenty-seventeen was down to four hundred and forty-one thousand. And of those four hundred and forty-one thousand in twenty-seventeen, the actual number completed was a little bit less than a hundred and sixty thousand. USDA is going to do more for child nutrition. They have not one thing they're proposing that is a problem for our schools. The S N A, so the Mental Nutrition Assistance Program, is going to put more than nine hundred and eighty students ineligible for three-year student loans. That's going to have an impact on our students. So we are very strongly encouraging our legislators to oppose that. There was a good bit of discussion about school safety, about cybersecurity, cigarettes, banking, raising the legal age to purchase tobacco products. There is one to do more funding provided through homeland security for guidance and technical assistance services for cyber security, and for school safety resources and guidance. We had a great deal of discussion about school infrastructure and broadband connectivity. They are putting in a good bit more money for this. And one thing we found out is that Wrinkle County is doing a test pilot program where they put Wi-Fi on the school buses, where the students can do some of their homework on the way home. Now, I know Dr. Rosenberg told me, we don't have a lot of students on the buses a long time. But one thing that Wrinkle County Board members said is that, while. But one thing the Wrinkle County board member said is that while the students are online, there's less misbehavior on buses. The buses are very quiet, so that's positive. And we did have the opportunity to talk to Senator Brink. He did come here to our meeting. Frankly, he was blacked out. He has been up till two or three in the morning with heroes that in the country. But he thought this blue bus idea would be wonderful. He would very much like for South Carolina to be prototyped for the nation and he thinks President Trump will be doing a whole lot of it. And one advantage of this is that he thinks that federal government should pay for half of all this if these states prove they're right. Now, that could also include them chipping in extra money for new buses to accommodate this. And since we do have aging school buses, that will be a huge focus. Now, one thing that we focused on for school infrastructure is concerned is the bacon days requirement. That's one of those things that can get kind of slayed and quietly, but it can hurt us bad. The bacon, Davis bacon requirement requires employers as part of the provision to pay prevalent rate rates determined by the US Department of Labor to all laborers and mechanics for these projects. They want to extend bacon and Davis to the schools. Now, what that means is, as a firm example, the renovations that built the building in Marshall, we would be required to have the same as we're paying in Washington, this city, New York. Our parents here consider the lower because of our cost of living. So we are very much opposed to that because that would hurt us terribly. The School Board Association does support the overall bill, but very much opposed to this. We did make a few trips on off times. Went to Arlington National Cemetery, saw the changing of the cupboard. And if any of y'all have never been there, we need to go get lost in the woods. We were able to spend some time with Representative Duncan's staff, with Senator Scott's staff, with Senator Graham's staff. But we also were able to take a tour of the House of Representatives in the gallery. And we actually were standing there, we had two people in the gallery looking where they were gonna have the state of the union that month. And where we were standing is where Mrs. Trump was getting married that month. It was amazing. We also took a trip by the Dollars of the American Revolution Museum because they've got scholarships available. And so you have to have it. They are members who sign scholarships back for community bodies of the district who wants one. I've got a member forty years now signing one. We also took a tour of the White House right before we took that. And one thing that's very interesting, you're no longer allowed to take copies of this thing. So, if you go to the White House, be sure to get a wallet. But it was a very good trip, I think it was productive. We learned a lot. And what I'd like to see as in the future, anytime we have people going to conferences, it would be nice to hear what you come back and learn from that experience. Because I just like what we shared was with rest of the board and also with the program. I agree. And Dr. Barnes and I have actually written an article that we have sent there already to learn. And that will be at next week's, but not this week because we can't get anywhere this week. But we just outlined that, that as representatives of this district, then it is fair for us to report to the people our actions. You sent us and we've outlined that it is fair for us to share with the people our experiences. So thank you for sending us and I enjoyed it, it was a tired few days, but I do feel like it's very prosperous. We were actually the only two from Andersonville. So I felt like that we represented more than just Andersonville, but holders of the county altogether.
I didn't do that two days, remember, I actually want to item. But the first one is on the left side of the record, this is February the twenty-eighth. It is at a meeting, but we have a government center in Amherst, representative West will be in attendance with some of our folks. Which welcomes in, it is a business meeting, so we'll have three important speakers. So if you're gonna rest in peace, that is, now, and as soon as possible. So that is the time, it should last a few hours. Will be either a chair or a professional fellow, or the district office. And then the other one is just a reminder, Chance Yevgen, that's your economic statement of that. Economic interest in there, it's a good time to get taken care of now. And let's walk through that meeting. And thanks to Big C.
The next item on the agenda is number nine, executive session. Do a fair mention that we live into executive session. Ms. Phil is second. Mr. Eads, no, so at this time, all this is paper, raise your hand. So at this time, we will return into executive session. We will be out shortly.